Good to go.
Yes.
All right. You all, please rise. The common council meeting for Monday, February 24th, 2020 is now in session. Our invocation is by Zachary Gillis, South Bend City Church. Thank you, sir, for coming.
Will you please bow your heads with me? Let us pray silently together, each one of us according to our individual beliefs. Let us offer thanks for this day, the blessings that have been given to us and for one another. May we be a source of hope for those in need and contentment for those who are burning down, heavy laden, and lonely. Let us give gratitude for our opportunity to serve this great city with wisdom and discernment for the greater good of our people. And let the feelings of love, kindness, and a well-directed yet gentle spirit always be reflected in our words, deeds, and actions. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sirs. Join me in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. If you would, please turn your cell phones to silent. Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Andrew Seer.
Councilmember McBride.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Councilmember Teska.
Here.
Councilmember Niskowski.
Here.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember Hammond.
Present.
Vice President White.
Present.
President Scott.
Present.
Thank you. Report on Subcommittee of Minutes, please.
Report of Subcommittee on Minutes. To the common council of the city of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 10th, 2020, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Make a motion to accept the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. At this point, there is no special business. While we have many people from many different districts within our city, we have a nice contingent from the second district, I mean, sixth district, I'm sorry, boarding on the second. Would you all please just stand? There's your civic duty. Thank you all for coming. No offense to the other districts, it's just good to see a large gathering. At this time, there are no reports from city offices. Casey Gurley is in the audience from Mayor's Office. Thank you for being here. Entertaining a motion to rise and join Committee of the Whole.
For move.
Side.
All in favor.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading in public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading in public hearing have been given a first reading and set for a committee meeting in public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the result of their discussion. Ms. Jones, will you please give Bill 0320 a second reading?
0320, public hearing on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1322 North Chimes, Councilmanic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. Is there a committee report? Oh, that would be me. Thank you. The ZNA committee meeting met and are sending Bill 03-20 with an unfavorable recommendation. Is there a presenter?
There is Joseph Molnar, zoning specialist with offices on the 14th floor of the building. We're here for the petition to rezone property located at 1322 Chimes Boulevard, which is currently zoned S1 suburban neighborhood one and rezoned to C Commercial. If you see the parcel that is shaded yellow that's included in the black border is the site that we're discussing today. Here are some images of the site. It is the White, it is the White House on the right that we rezone. The current site plan has that home being torn down and that entire site to the north of it as well with the establishment of a car wash. Here is the view of the vacant parcel to the north that is part of this petition but is already zoned C Commercial. Here is looking south onto the property, so the house that would be torn down is on the left in the gate there. And here is directly across the street from the parcel that is to be rezoned. You see it's a single-family neighborhoods all the way, or single-family homes all the way south on the street. And then one last look, looking north onto the property, the very last house on the right is the one that would be rezoned. Here is the site plan, most recent site plan proposed by the developer. They've pretty much keep the second house that they originally had shown being torn down. You can see the car wash, only slightly comes in to this parcel gave rezoned, but it's the mostly the car drive that is going to be on the site. The project summary is to rezone property from S1 suburban neighborhood to C Commercial for a vehicular car wash. As we talked about in committee, when we try to evaluate these situations, we have criteria we look at. One of the major criteria is how does it conform with the comprehensive plan? In the comprehensive plan, there is the objective H2, which states maintain South Bend's housing stock in good condition, specifically policy H2.5, pursue alternatives to the demolition or structural sound counseling. So that is the primary reason we are opposed to this petition is that it does tear down structurally sound houses currently occupied. We staff wanted to reiterate, we are fine with the car wash use on the C Commercial site. It is zoned correctly for that and we've actually worked with the petitioner and were in favor of a number of variances at the planning commission level that were approved to help them have a car wash on the site. The only part that we are concerned with is the tearing down of a structurally fine home, which we don't think would be benefit to the neighborhood, and also the approachment of that C Commercial down Chimes like we showed in this picture here across the street from the car wash, our single-family homes. We are worried about the approachment south onto the neighborhood. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the committee? President.
Mr. Molnar, can you talk about those options or variances that you were discussing? Because if I look here, excuse me, if I look here, just even flipping it from the east side to the west side, I believe if my direction is right, wouldn't the building fit in also pretty much the driveways as well?
We did try to work with the petitioner to treat the site. Mike Danz, he's representing them, can speak more on that. I think there were three variances that they requested from the planning commission. They were all given favorable recommendation. One was to have the driveway in, or the drive lane in the front yard. Because this is a two-frontage lot, it does have this weird situation where it does want to have a backyard. So we were in support of all those and we've iterated, we'd be in support to find ways to make it work on the site that they currently have that is zoned correctly. We did do some analysis of some other car washes. This is listed at 150 feet. We did find some in the area that were shorter than that, but we're not in the car wash business, but we did find some that would have fit, I think.
And one other question. Who owns the occupied house in question right now for the record?
Currently, I have to look through Bob here. It is currently, I think, on a contingent sale that this goes through. Looks like Bradley Davis is the owner of the currently occupied site. I believe it is a rental unit because their address is listed as Grainger.
It is a rental unit, yeah. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? So I have a question. So that with the other three alternatives that were given, the only option that the petitioner was requesting was either the car lot and the subsequent property?
So with this, so even if this went through, they would have needed those three variances? And they were granted? Because we always treat the variances as if the rezoning went through because we still have to, you know, if you guys decide to rezone the property, they still needed those variances? And we were in support of those because we do understand the site is really configured and that there are some practical difficulties. So we were in support, and we would be in support further if trying to make the site work.
Thank you. Is there a petitioner? Please state your name and address.
Thank you. Mike Danz from Danz Hardware and Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive in South Bend, representing the petitioner. As had been mentioned, when we had talked to council about what we were asking to do is to rezone the single property on Chimes Boulevard from the S1 to the C Commercial lot for the car wash that we discussed this afternoon. What we had done with this, we did try to work with the staff on changing the location and with the way to lay out working towards this development to try to help out with any kind of mitigation or issues or concerns with the adjacent neighborhood, which is farther down Chimes Boulevard. We actually moved the driveway in terms into the car wash facility back 25 feet to keep that in line with the existing homes that are along Chimes Boulevard. What we had also done is to add additional evergreen screening along the street skates or Chimes Boulevard, although it's not required by the ordinance if you get them. And again, hard to mitigate any kind of issues with the car wash and the location. We do meet all the requirements for the setbacks for screening from the existing residential, the S1, which is the other house that we are peaking on the south of the site, and the existing S1, which is at the southeast corner. We did, we kept the building back, the pavement back from those particular areas that exceed the requirements by the zoning ordinance. As was also mentioned to council, the existing commercial portion of the property, which is just south of the Flur site, that does have a driveway. We saw a picture of out onto Chimes Boulevard. With this particular development that we're proposing, that driveway would be closed off, there would not be any direct access between this development onto Chimes Boulevard. So if there were any concerns from residents for any traffic that would be going from this facility into that residential neighborhood, that would not happen. Our only act at this point is on to get some other, which we had mentioned to council earlier. This particular development if we were to go in would be about $2.5 to $3 million investment. One of the questions that had been asked and also stated in the staff report was that by removing one of the houses, that the housing stock for South Bend would basically be impacted. We're saying that the one house that's being removed, that's a single family, that's that particular house pays taxes of about $1,924 according to the assessor's office. The existing development that is there for the commercial right now is just a parking area, it's just pavement, it's been vacant probably for 11 to 14 years, waiting for some type of development to come into this particular area. That property probably pays the taxes again according to the county records of about $2,200. So right now, the assessed taxation for this property we're talking about is about $4,100. If this development were to go in, the assessed value and taxation would probably be in the area between $13,000 to $18,000 per year. So there would be an impact, it would be a positive impact for this particular area. We have tried to take care of any kind of issues or implications with us and the existing single family. But we also had noted, council was across the street on the west side of Chimes. You have the doctor's office that has a parking lot and you can see the entrance to the parking lot is almost in the line of what we're asking to rezone. The CBS store in the back of the CBS store also faces this particular portion of the property. To the east is that office building, which we showed council a picture of that we're backing up to. With the way the development would lay out, we have a 41% open space with most of that grass area along Chimes Boulevard. So we've done everything we could to keep any kind of impact away from those residential homes. What we would ask council to do is approve that single property, which is only 55 feet, and with to the C Commercial zoning, as I had mentioned. Of that 55 feet, we're only using approximately 35. 20 feet of that would be remaining, as you see is the screen area, which is the evergreen screening and open space. Do you have any questions for me?
Council, Mr. President.
Would you be willing to double the amount of screening entries?
Yes. The council desires that, absolutely. We would even provide fencing as well, which is one of the things we had mentioned before. Well, the fencing from the standpoint of fencing behind the evergreen screen toward the development so that from the residential side, we're looking at every tree, and then the fence would be a solid cover as well behind the streets.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council?
I have one question. In terms of all of the different variants that were made to the potential developer, those weren't enough in regards to what the owner would like to do for that site? So what were some of the concerns?
You mean from the variances that were requested? The, actually, the variances requested is to bring council up to speed is because of the zoning classification, new requirements, the driveway that you see through the entrance going into the building, you're not allowed to do that on the C Commercial. You're not allowed to have a driveway between the, what we call, front facade building and a front street address. Because our property is unique, we have frontage both on Edison Road and on Chimes Boulevard. The interpretation of that was we also had two front streets, basically. And because of that, we were required to ask for variance for the vaillot area going into the car wash. But what we also did was, the staff had asked us, they said, if that goes in there, we would ask if we would pull that back 25 feet to make that setback. We did do that. And then what we also did was add those additional evergreen trees in there, again, to basically work that up so that if you were driving by this particular site from Chimes toward Edison, you would not see that particular development, you got closer to the Curves gas station. The other variance that was requested, again, because of the zoning category, is the UF district where you have the office building between that and where our property is, that would require a 15-foot buffer zone. We're looking at the back of the office building, basically, they did that in the old zoning categories. This particular property had pavement right up to that property line. What we were able to do was to work with the staff, we shifted the building, the vacuum stations, and the driveway hardly to the west to maximize that space along that east property line. And we went from, I think it was about three feet to just about eight feet to do that. But what we did do was along the south property line, southeast corner, where we were up against the single-family house, we actually increased our setback to the metals. The variance did not cover the south property line, that southeast corner. We actually exceeded the request or by the zoning ordinance, that's 15 feet. We have almost 18 feet between our south property line to where the edge of the pavement is from that southeasterly house, we're almost at 28 feet.
So my final question, I should have asked this in committee. Without the house being, you know, moved, then the project can't move forward? Is that what you're saying?
With, yes, with this building. And I've been told by the developer that this particular building developed three other sites, to Old Port County and in Porter County. The length of this particular building for this developer is the one that works with this car wash for the type of operations that they run, as we had mentioned to council. This is the one that's most efficient for them.
For them.
And to be able to get the car washed, to get it dry, is what I can leave the facility in your car strike.
Thank you.
Mr. Teska.
I just wanted to make sure that, to follow up on President Scott's question about your commitment to double screening and fencing and stuff, that, I mean, that would be a written commitment at some point? I mean, if we were to, how would we, if we were to table this, I guess, or amend it? Written commitments?
We could, we could actually do that and also, just to get council something additional, is to make sure that also for a commitment, that you don't have one access point outside Edison Road and Chimes Boulevard.
Ash Showdown, on this.
Ash Showdown, yeah. Yeah. I just want to make sure, council, if you're going to go for a commitment, you want to make sure we get that too.
Right.
For security for residents.
And I'm on Google Maps here, so you'd essentially be taking away that entrance that's already there onto the property.
That would be absolutely correct.
Right. Okay.
Councilwoman Hammond? Do you have a question?
So the owner of this potential business owns other car washes?
Yes.
This is a larger business for them, this is not a one?
Oh, no, yeah, they actually do these operations. They've been looking in this area for the past two years to find a piece of property that, and they look for two things when they're looking for property. One is, is access, that you have ease of access, but the other main one is traffic. So they were looking for Edison Road or Hyattwood Drive in those areas, Hyattwood Road, Great Road, those kind of locations. Because that's what you basically want. When people going by, they would think this isn't necessarily a destination. It's usually a pick, everyone gets a car wash that goes in, wants to go in. Now, these particular ones are not open seven days a week. This is council, this is closed on Sunday, and it's only open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. and then it shuts down.
Any other questions?
As far as the residents there, I know there was a letter sent out to, what is it, within 300?
Within 300 feet. Well, we had attempted.
300 feet? And then there was another one sent out by, I mean, I guess for me, I just want to make sure that if we're going to encroach into someone's, or allow this to happen, that they're fully aware of the impact of the business. And I'm just not 100% that's been met. And not that they haven't done their job properly, but sometimes people get stuck in mail, or, you know, they'll tell you, oh, what is this? They toss it. So I guess that's just my concern, and maybe it's...
I had, I had asked the developer before we were able to start this process, I said, there are going to be council members, and just in my experience, there are going to be developments. And that, before I ever come to this council, I better have the answer that I tried to contact residents or the neighborhood before I do. We did do that, especially for the case, we used basically the same mailing list that the community investment uses to send out notice, people would be reselling, the site's looking obviously signs on the site. We did that. We had it meaningfully set up. We were ready to go, it was for November 14th date. It was at 7:00, it was only about three minutes, three and a half minutes from this particular site, we were doing meetings, we were trying to make it as easy as we could for the residents to show up, or at least even gave them phone numbers to call. And what was sent out was a letter and also copied the site plan so that they saw what was happening. So if there were any questions whatsoever, because sometimes people don't like to show up at meetings for anything, they would prefer maybe to either call. We had received no calls whatsoever. And up until last Monday at the planning commission meeting, no one had shown up at the planning commission meeting that was against this particular petition, no one had received any letters. I believe the councilmen since that time has received a couple of emails, those and others. Up until that time, we hadn't received no remonstrance, no one showed up to the council.
Mr. Teska, then I'll go to the councilman.
Just real quick again, to, so this afternoon, we had a brief update from community investment and the planning team. I want to, talking about looking at the future of these sites, right? And so, I guess I want to just be clear on something for myself and I guess for everybody, but if, and you might not be the one to answer this question, Mr. Danz, it might be somebody from the planning team, if there's written commitments that go into this, those stay with the property and not the user, correct?
That would be correct. Written commitments could report it for this development that the council wants, it wants to move the land, not with the owner.
So...
So any development that happens on this property, those stay in force. There's no way to change those, they'll be come back for a public hearing proceeding.
So I guess then I, my question would be, how would we word the double screen, double the screening kind of thing, as far as a written commitment?
What we would end up doing is, if that's council's desire to do that, we would then have to go through the committee investment staff to come up with that, which then the staff would be based on what we're sending this evening, and then those would be reported. And what could always happen is, is the committee investment staff would show you those written commitments before they get reported.
It was, I don't get it, but I'd say...
I think you could simply...
Name and address, please.
Sorry, Angela Smith, with the Department of Community Investments, Office of Slipping and Sporting for this building. You could word it simply as a proof subject to written commitments that show a tight, a double row of evergreen trees between the single-family and the commercial, as well as limiting it to the access to Edison Road also. So you could just state the issues you want in there and then we draft it as a staff and then it is reported. And the zoning doesn't actually change on the map until that's reported and fully executed. It does stay with the property, as Mike indicated. There was actually written commitments to the property next door. Some of the challenges for those a little bit, though, is the written commitments often respond to the site plan you've seen in review, and the site plan changes. So for instance, the office building next door had a series of written commitments, but was not built in the manner that was shown during that time. And so sometimes they become hard to enforce. This one seems pretty clear because it's specifically addressing that kind of southeast boundary and the access. So that would apply to any business that went in here, whether it would be the car wash or somebody else.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner.
So, go ahead, Ms. Hannah.
I'm just wondering, vacuums and all of those types of amenities are available as well?
Yes.
And are those outside or inside?
Well, the actual, the vacuum itself, the tubing that you would vacuum your power is outside, but the actual compressor and the thing that makes the noise is in the building.
Thank you.
Mr. Warner.
So, as I said, kind of in the committee hearing, I got some emails and then took advantage of the sunshine and went and knocked on a few doors. I was only able to talk to about three people today, so kind of gotten feedback, I think, three emails and three people from six of the neighbors there. I think a lot of it was a misconception with kind of the same kind of car wash that was there is going in again now. I will commend you that the building looks very nice, you know, a nice brick building there. Another concern was the drive-on chimes, and this kind of takes care of that and remedies that. I guess if we're going to do written commitments, I would like to see that in there. But then, as, you know, as been pointed out to, zoning is forever, right? And you could build your car wash and in 15 years, it could be something else. Well, I get with, we have those commitments that'll be there. I think, so the other concern I have, I've heard from the neighbors is kind of a lot of focused around the gas station area and the floors and some alleged, I'm an attorney, so I use alleged, alleged criminal activity, right? And there's concern that that at night activity will shift over to your parking lot.
That would, if that's an issue, because you only have one access point into our parking area, you need to make sure that that gets shut down so that you can not have access to the parking area. If that's concerned with residents, that's relatively easy, because you only have one access point and you shut something down. That, we could do that. If you want to make that harder to happen, we can do that.
Mr. Warner, and also, Rick, you had mentioned the all-brick building. The ordinance does not require all-brick, so if you would like us to kind of have the architectural standard, that could be a commitment, that the building be constructed of all-brick on all four sides to match the elevations shown. Otherwise, they could, you know, just be within the head lines of the C Commercial zoning.
And we'd be glad to do that.
Okay.
President, Scott.
Just kind of getting back to the screening, because of the issues, Mr. Warner, that's why I would probably recommend the fence as well, to keep people out of the neighborhood from cutting through. Just kinda getting back to the screening, um, because of the issues, Mr. Warner, um, that's why I would probably recommend a fence as well, um, to keep people out of the neighborhood from cutting through, um, that property. Ms. Smith, you said something that intrigued me, that you said, um, the office building across the street was, had written commitments, but, um, wasn't built to those written commitments?
So the office building to the east had a series of written commitments that were based on the site plan that was shown, so there were things like screening the retention area, providing extra trees, and things like that, and then when the site plan came in for this particular building, it had changed so dramatically that, um, the written commitments almost didn't make sense anymore, and so they were hard to apply to the property, because there wasn't a retention area to screen in, and the, the orientation of the building had changed.
Okay.
So some of those things are, are hard to, to manage. When we review these from the staff, when we make recommendations with planning commission, anything that could be handled as part of the plan, like, and reviews submitted for the partial plan review, we try to do as a subject to. Um, for instance, on the drive-through, we had subject to the twenty-five foot setback. Once that's installed, it's installed and it's there forever, so it doesn't really matter if it's a commitment or not. Um, it's a little trickier when you get to this point, because when you pass an ordinance subject to something, the only way to change it is to change the whole ordinance over.
I understand that. What I, what I'm getting at, and I know that was the county area plan at the time that did the office, right? So now it's a city area plan, and my one concern here is anything that we're doing, and I, I bring up the, uh, the junkyard that I have on the corner of Vassar and the diamond, which nothing has happened there, that, um, what are you guys gonna do in your department to make sure this stuff has teeth and people are held accountable?
So first of all, since the time that office building went into place, we have actually moved where the staff drafts the written commitments, so we can make sure the ordinance is ordered in such a way that it is enforceable, and that we have some teeth to it, so we've taken over some ownership of that. Um, we actually have also, uh, increased the, the connection between the departments, so we work much more closely with the building department now than we did before, uh, to review and make sure everything is actually signed off on. I have, actually go to final inspections for properties now, um, as a zoning administrator, to make sure all the zoning compliance is, is filed as well, which hasn't happened prior to the January of this year, so.
Okay, um, so again, it, it comes down to your department making sure that things are enforced, and, like I said, one, I voted for your whole zoning change in your whole department, that we need to have a conversation about enforcement, because I still have a residential junkyard with a box truck sitting in the middle of the backyard. So, in lieu of that, you would be confident if we put things in place that you guys would enforce anything that Mr. Danch's client would do?
I will do my best to make sure everything you guys wish is on the site plan.
My God, you need to sit up here with that type of answer. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
And, and for written commitments, if they're enforceable, they're council as well, so it's council, building, department, and, uh, community investment. So it's not just one group, there's, uh, and also the, uh, residents within three hundred and sixty, when you start doing written commitments, there, there's a lot of levers that starts happening between, uh, whether it's governmental and or residential residents.
Thank you, Mr. Danch.
Anything further before I go to the public portion?
Just like to make one, to help with the written commitment, I was just looking, one, a way to word the one for the double screening would just be to require type-three buffering, which is twice as much as the twice-type-two that they're showing, to require type-three where type-two would be required.
All right, um, at this time, I will go to the public portion. Is there anyone in the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill zero-three dash twenty? Is there any one present wasn't, wishing to speak in opposition of Bill zero-three dash twenty?
Jason Beniki Chrislow, thirty-eight twenty-two West Forest Street. Uh, something, you know, zoning came up quite a bit with the last council, was something towards the end, they finally got pretty good at, realizing once you start allowing zoning changes to one person, it becomes really hard when the next person comes through wanting a zoning change as well to say no, because you've set a precedent. You know, we've got our new planning commission, we've got our new zone, zones in place and new zoning, to kinda make it even more, you know, uniform in what goes in what areas. I think, you know, two months into the new planning commission and the new council, is not necessarily the right time to set the precedent that, well, now that there's new people up here and it's, it's a new planning commission, that we're gonna go back to the old ways of, well, you know, this residential area can become commercial, this can become industrial, this can become that. I think it just becomes, you know, time to say, it makes sense to stick with the zoning we put in place, find another place in this area. There's plenty of places in this city where a car wash can go that are zoned for one. Why tear down a house, that's a perfectly good house, and change zoning when it doesn't need that?
Thank you. Anyone else? At this point, the public hearing on Bill zero-three dash twenty is now closed. Council members can make savings if you will.
I'd like to make a motion to amend this written proposal to type-three screening. No access off of chimes. And, uh, a fence on the inner portion of the property on the interior of the screening.
I would second that motion.
And maybe could we add some type of a structure that will close off the parking lot to Edison Street during the half hour?
Oh, we gotta, yeah. Thank you.
It has been moved in second to amend Bill zero-three dash twenty to type-three screening with the additional commitments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any? Any opposition?
Take a roll call?
Roll call, please. Councilmember Davis?
You're already clear.
I think, I think I said name.
No one said name. No one said name.
No one said name. Well, you guys weren't really discussing that, you're trying to.
I agree, no one said name.
I said name.
All right, all right, okay, she said name, then. Okay, so roll call, aye.
Okay.
Listen on the member.
Right.
Listen on the member.
Right, okay. Um, councilmember McBride? Aye. Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tescott?
Aye.
Councilmember Nizkowski?
No.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Making motion to send this to the full council favorably, as amended.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Ms. Jones, please read Bill number zero-five twenty.
Zero-five twenty, public hearing on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana. Reaffirming ordinance number one oh-six-eight-eight dash nineteen, establishing a wastewater low-income assistance program.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, it is, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
The utilities committee met this afternoon.
Thank you, sir.
And we send this bill five twenty to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Let me see. Is there a petition, President?
Uh, good evening, Members of the council. Aladeen DeRose, City Attorney with offices on the Trump Four of this building. This is an ordinance to reapprove or to reaffirm, uh, the low-income customer assistance program that was passed on October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, we're doing this in an abundance of caution, as a legal technicality. Technically, uh, we don't necessarily believe that this reaffirmation is necessary, but the, there is a statute that requires notice by, by mail to users of a utility of a fee increase, which we consider to mean a rate increase, like a fee increase. Um, and that notice must be sent before, is there a question?
Mr. Danch, sorry, um, point order. I did forget one written exception was the brick. So what's the Robert's rule to do that?
You have to recall the bill after this is over with, can't do it right now.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that right, uh?
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
That's right.
All right. Okay, sorry about that, everybody. Sorry, Mr. Rose.
And, and so, um, we are, although it's not in our opinion necessary to do this, we have sent notice by mail to four thousand so users of the city utility outside the city, and this is an opportunity for them to come and be heard in the foot of council, although this, this, uh, bill came up with a lot of public discussion at the time. Uh, by way of history, the, um, low-income ass- customer assistance program came about as a result of a two-dollar per customer increase on the stormwater, as a stormwater fee, to prevent, uh, to assist and prevent to the flooding of basements within, within the service area. Members of the council rightly and appropriately were concerned, particularly Councilmember White and McBride, about the impact that a two-dollar or any, or any additional cost to certain, to low-income customers would have. And so this ordinance came about as a way of relieving, providing some, some reduction in cost for the sewer bill. And so the bill itself allows for a ten and a fourteen dollar and a nineteen dollar credit on the average sewer bill of forty-five dollars, and it's for low-income persons. So, uh, we're here this evening to hear if there are any outside users of the public utility who wish to be heard, and as I said, I'm not sure that this is necessary, but we're doing it so that we're certain that this bill will be, um, totally legal, um, when it goes into effect. Uh, any questions?
Councilmembers, any questions? Yes, it is. All right, uh, thank you so much. Now I go to the public portion. Is there anyone here from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill zero-five dash twenty? Please come state your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Aladeen DeRose, six two-one, Whiteville Street, in Joel Woods. Um, I have been living on my own for eight and a half years now. I am paying sixty-dollar water bill, which is not easy to do. And with a person that's living by themselves, that is an awful high price to have to pay. I own fifty dollars, I, I work twenty-nine hours a week. I get paid every other week, so I really don't make that much at all. So I was hoping that we could get the water bill down and get the sewage bill down. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else? Is there any one present wishing to speak in opposition of Bill zero-five dash twenty? State your name and address, sir.
Murray Miller, I'm just at twenty-three, six ninety-eight Western Avenue. Uh, it's not that I'm opposing the, um, to help out those that can't afford to. My concern is who makes the determination of who can afford to pay the increase, and it's kinda something that, um, is kinda self-created by the city as they continue to increase the sewer rates and not doing the CSO work. They say that, that issue was about flooding, but that's what the CSO was about, is to, to help eliminate the flooding process. So if we've been doing the process all along, I don't think that we would be in a position that we're in now. Uh, I've asked, uh, how much money is in the fund for the CSO work, and nobody knows. City South Bend hasn't done any CSO work in about, uh, six years. I know this, they, they said that you can use real services, but if you make, uh, let's say thirty thousand dollars in real services, cut-off is thirty thousand, you make thirty-one, then you don't qualify through real services. So that's what concerns me, and then what happens when the, the rate increase goes up again? Then I'll be back here raising the rate on, up to some people, not everybody. Those are my concerns.
Is there a rebuttal?
Thank you. First of all, the, um, the formula for determining, uh, need is, is, uh, is a simple one that is applied by real services. Real services will apply the formula that, um, is based on median household income, and so it's just an application of a formula. The individual applies, that real services provides proof of income, and then the appropriate fee is assessed. Uh, the CSO fees are, are, the CSO, um, improvements, as you know, we were under a federal mandate to make improvements and reduce the number of events, um, of, of sewage going into the St. Joseph River. And, um, the improvements will be done to the plant and its, and the facility. The stormwater, um, the stormwater fee is for something entirely different, and this, um, program requires one dollar seventy-five cents charged to all users so that we can assist the low in, low-income persons in receiving the ten to nineteen dollar, uh, credit on their account. Uh, our, this program is based on a pilot program, I believe, that was initiated by the city of Indianapolis, and it's in progress, as I understand, it seems to work. Any other questions?
Ladies first.
Ms. Hammond, thank you.
Ms. DeRose, um, do you know what the household income cutoff is?
I don't know the dollar now. It's, uh, it's based on percentage of the median household income, and so it's, it's just a formula, which is. Let's see here. The, the notice that this part of your packet will show that, that formula, and it's in the original ordinance. Sixty percent of the, a hundred percent of the sixty percent of the median, median household income receives a credit of eleven dollars and seventy-five cents. Seventy-five percent of the sixty percent of the median median household income, household receives a credit of fifteen seventy-five. And fifty percent of the sixty percent of the median median household income receives a credit of twenty seventy-five. Those numbers, um, including one dollar seventy-five cents, those customers have paid. So the net increase, the net reduction is ten fourteen nineteen.
Mr. Davis?
Yeah, uh, that was, actually was gonna ask, but I need different numbers, I mean, I, I, I guess more detailed numbers, um, of how many people are in South Bend that are receiving water or actually using this program? Because I talked earlier about us pricing people out of the city by continuing to raise rates on utilities. Water is a necessary thing. Can't live on planet earth without water. And so we have to, like, pay attention to who is really, like, hurting from these rate, these rate decreases. I, I think that there's a longer, a larger conversation that needs to be had, but until I can get exact figures on how many people, I'm not even asking you for them. I don't know where I'm gonna get them from, but I'm gonna try to find out, uh, exactly how many people are actually using that, uh, program for help.
Yeah, the program hasn't yet gone into a set. The, the ordinance was approved, but it hasn't.
I thought you guys just said it started last year.
No, we started the, we started the conversation, we proved the ordinance.
Okay, I'm lost, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine though, because I think the question is right.
That's, that's valid, that's valid information that we will try, and we will certainly find out.
Actually, they have. They, last year, they wanted to start January one.
Right.
We delayed it, and they, since the working document, we got the numbers produced, and I don't remember the, the last name, it wakes water, Kim. They gave us the numbers, so that document should be readily available for us.
So, does a hundred percent of the people that need financial assistance want to be approved by real services?
If they need, if they meet the income test.
They don't magically get insurance?
They must meet the income test, and I, and I, we believe that the dollar seventy-five will be enough to cover that.
So where do they get their money from to pay off these folks' water or supplement of bills?
It's a credit. It's a credit.
I thought I got that earlier. So, never mind. I'm done. Because it doesn't make sense to me, right now, it doesn't. So, just allow me to, you know, go to sleep on that one. Because we're asking members of the public, South Bend public, taxpayers, to help support others who cannot pay their own fee. That's what we're doing. And we're, we're farming this out to real services to do, you know?
The administrative, the administrative...
Real services already has the numbers, so the city doesn't have to input all of the data in the computer. Real services already does the function of identifying the income for everyone for utilities and the water. So, those numbers are already calculated.
So, if you apply it through real services for heat assistance, it goes already there.
The people and the number are already calculated as far as the percentage and who's impoverished, to not. And so, they gave the data, and we had the meeting. So, all the, when she's talking about sixty percent of below the threshold, the number, and I'm glad you asked that question, there is real data that was given to us to know exactly what you're asking, how many people in the city versus the county, who gets the water service. So, that information that you're asking for is absolutely a great question, and we do have the data for you.
Somewhere there's a PowerPoint from when this was initially presented.
There is absolutely information for you that you're asking for, which is great for you to know.
I think, hopefully I'm not here...
Yes.
Hopefully, I'm not out of order. I think that what we, because I did not vote for the ordinance at first, and, well, I didn't vote for it, but we put in the concern in terms of the impact it will have on those of our citizens who are with limited income. I think the larger conversation that we must have as a city, as a council, is, one, we can't, we can't increase fees in order to meet the basic services for our citizens. We've got to have a much broader conversation. Also, we can't tax away out of it. And so, that as we begin to look at some of the areas in which we know we may be receiving rate increases, I think that is going to entail a larger conversation in regards to how we in other cities, how we are going to fund and the impact that will have on our citizens on the long term. So, I think that's a much broader discussion that needs to happen very quickly.
Yeah, there are other options as well.
Oh, the other options, yeah.
Yeah, because the problem I'm having, and you can't answer this, it's not a question, but the, where I'm getting jammed up in my head is that we're going to increase rates. And then, the rates that we increase, Troy and I are going to be responsible for an extra amount of money for somebody that can't pay. It could be seventy-five cents. The question, the problem that I'm having with it is that before we increase the rates, shouldn't there just be a study on whether we should go this high, or this high, or this high, or not at all before it even goes into effect? Because you're asking tax-paying citizens, I pay my taxes, taxes are on time, you know, you get those people. And so, you're asking those same people to foot the bill for somebody that they feel like they should be able to take care of their own. And so, now, you have this discussion about, you know, the welfare thing. You get into all kinds of stuff, you know? And it just sounds like the city's business should be taken care of before we ask for more. You understand what I'm saying? I think that's where I'm wrong with it.
Yeah, can I just ask a question? Yeah, I think if we go back and look at the original presentation, and I know, thank you for your patience, Mr. Rose, I know you're not torn, but you're ahead of this. Initially, it was engineered and public works. So, your role here is really a cleanup, yeah, as a cleanup. And so, my question is regarding that, would be that essentially, not this council, but the previous councils already passed the original ordinance, right? So, this is a reaffirming ordinance, just for hypothetical purposes, if this ordinance failed, what happens? The four thousand folks just are exempt from that?
I'm not sure, because I'm not sure that we needed to give those four thousand folks the notice. But we gave it in the abundance of caution. If they didn't, if they weren't entitled to notice as a matter of law, then the bill applies to them.
Right, so essentially, we...
If it doesn't, then they would be excluded, yes, because the bill passes.
So, essentially, because, so, and I guess the point of me then is, the bill, the original bill was passed, and therefore, this will go into effect for...
It was valid for the city of South Bend.
All city residents. Not those four thousand some customers that are not within the city limits. Those are the only ones hanging out there in the balance right now that this essentially, right? So, I just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on what this does and doesn't do.
That's correct. We're understanding.
Just one point, not to be argumentative, but this would not be the first time in our society that we experience a redistribution of wealth based on economic need. It's a dollar seventy-five. I doubt that people, if they, we were to go to households and ask them if that was a significant hardship, I'd be surprised to find anyone that would say that a dollar seventy-five cents is going to make a break down. Just saying. Now, if there are other issues, such as making sure that we have our house in order financially, that's a whole nother conversation for us to have. But I don't think that this original ordinance varies from the norm that we experience in our nation as a whole, that we, those that have have a tendency to pay for those that have not. Just my two cents.
That's a day.
I agree. That's not what I'm getting at. I'm talking about the city's business, and I keep staying on this. Every time I make a point about it, I'm talking about city business. If we have a three hundred and fifty-plus billion dollar budget every year, TIF districts to hold nine, that means we have enough access to capital revenue that could help supplement or support the rate change instead of asking any mini-mime mode to do it, and then we'll come back and try to figure it out later. That's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the optics of it, and I'm going to talk about what Murray was just talking about, where's the money going? Because a dollar seventy-five or a dollar fifty is going, you can count that up amongst all the residents, and also all the people that are on city water. So, the city knows how many people are on city water. Yes or no? Yes, they do. So, they know at, every month, they can collect X million dollars in the water department. So, if we know that, then we also know that we can support it through the budget cycle that we produce every year. So, I don't think that putting the new rate increase out there, or fee, or whatever that may be, and saying, well, you guys, you can pay a hundred fifty, a dollar fifty, you know, every month to take care of it, help somebody else, they are already paying. They're already paying. So, why are you going to keep telling, asking them to continue to pay? And you're not doing what, the math that Murray was asking about earlier. You, we can't even point to where the money is going. But I digress. We'll figure this one out.
But if I'm not mistaken, I just want to add that the money, the ordinance was for the storm.
Two dollars.
For two dollars. And if I'm not mistaken, those funds would go into, because at that point, we did not have any funds supposedly to address the issue of flooding in homes. So, there is a designated fund that these funds were going to, if I'm not mistaken. I think all of that's in the original ordinance, and we'll probably need to send that around.
I think we created that fund in the two thousand eighteen.
That fund, so that someone were to ask in a month's time, once, you know, this goes into effect, the amount of dollars that have been captured, it goes into a certain fund. It's not mingle with others, if I'm not mistaken. But I'll double check that to be on the same side.
That would be in two thousand eighteen.
Yeah, will be... Can I ask you something?
We went back to the conference.
Alde, just to confirm, this ordinance makes no change whatsoever to city residents. It may not make any change to the county residents. This is built in suspenders.
Yes, it's giving people access to what's already available.
The ordinance has passed. The ordinance will go into a suspend. The question will be, who will it affect? And it may affect one hundred percent whether you pass it tonight, this ordinance or not. But to be sure, and to be certain that it will affect the non-city residents, this ordinance is being requested for passage.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to send zero five two zero to the full council for a favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Bill five zero, zero five dash twenty has passed, and will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Quick motion to rise and join the committee of the whole. Is that moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Moses Carey, thank you.
I'm sorry.
You've got to go back.
Got to go back and open me up.
Make a motion to join the committee of the whole.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
I apologize for my messed up earlier. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the prior motion of zero three two zero and vote. No, sorry, your motion will need to recall the bill. Rescind, recall? Rescind, vote. Rescind the vote. It would be to rescind the vote. Oh, and then recall. Make a motion to rescind the, motion to vote on zero three twenty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Moses Carey?
No.
Now, I'd make a motion on zero three twenty to, one, have type-three buffer landscaping installed adjacent to the single-family district. Two, no vehicular access to Chimes Avenue or Boulevard. Three, a fence on the interior of the landscaping. Four, parking area to be closed off during off-business hours. And five, the building to be constructed from brick on all sides.
Second.
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
We have one. I am closing the...
So, it goes to the full council with a favorable... Make a motion to send to the full council with, as amended, with a favorable recommendation.
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
There we go.
Any opposition? Motion's carried. Now, a motion to resolve and move back to the full council.
All in favor?
All in favor. Any opposition? Thank you.
I apologize to everybody.
Yes.
That, that became really rough. Okay. Full council's now back in session. Ms. Jones, would you please give third reading to zero three two zero?
Zero three two zero, third reading on an ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at thirteen twenty-two North Chimes, Councilmanic District Number Four, in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Entertain a motion to amend as it was in the committee of the whole. Is that moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Do you want me to do another call?
Nope, I need a motion for passing.
I move for the passage of zero three twenty, the amended version. Second.
Ms. Jones, roll call. We have some discussion on that first.
Are you ready? Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
So, when would the discussion have been? Committee of the whole? Turn to my preliminary procedure, man? It'd be committee of the whole.
Council, okay. Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
No.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, zero five two zero.
Third reading on an ordinance, five, zero five two zero, third reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, reaffirming ordinance number one zero six eight eight dash nineteen, establishing a wastewater low-income assistance program.
I move that zero five twenty, move that we pass, move for, yeah, passage of the block, zero five change.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Tezka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Yes.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, would you please read two zero one zero?
Resolution two zero zero one, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, encouraging a minimum annual percentage of the tax instrumental finance, financing funds from each TIF district to be allocated to and appropriated for tangible infrastructure improvements benefiting all areas in each TIF district.
Make a motion here, substitute version.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, is there a committee report? Yes, the community investment committee met and discussed the substitute version of Bill two zero, national zero one, and sends a full council's favorable recommendation. Thank you, is there a presenter? Well, that would be me. And my colleagues. Tim Scott, someone up Forest Avenue. This is with sponsorship with Vice President Karen White and committee chair Sharon McBride. Ladies, would you like to introduce yourself and make any comments?
Karen White, nineteen twelve, Melbourne Way. We started discussions with the president of the redevelopment commission, probably sometime around the point of last year. We've heard from our citizens when we were out in the neighborhood, but also individuals that come to the council meetings that need to really address our infrastructure and having funds to do so, such as curbs, sidewalks, sidewalk streets. And so, we felt that this would be one way in which we could do so. And so, monies in which probably the city had advocated for curbs, sidewalks, and infrastructure could now be picked up from TIF, and that would free dollars to do other things.
Ms. McBride, would you like to comment on anything?
No, no comment.
And just to pick up on that, this kind of originated out of some of the issues that we saw during the supportive housing initiative that came before the previous council. The one thing that we just want to encourage and reiterate, and I hope we have full council support on this, is to say to the administration and also to the public that we hear you, we know that there's needs to be done in neighborhoods, and where there is the advantage of TIF districts that, well, neighborhoods that fall within TIF districts, that the money, there should be some money and funding be used within those. I'm glad to see that the administration was supportive and on board. They actually made some positive amendments to this on the first draft, removing a ceiling that we had in place in the beginning to allow for any opportunity to go well beyond the five percent. In the past, neighborhoods haven't been the priority where TIF is being used. So, this is the point of this resolution. I think what we'll be doing is follow-ups in residential neighborhoods committee of, you know, how this is being spent, where this is being spent, so we can project that to the, to the residents. So, that's pretty much our presentation. This time, we'll take questions from the council. If there are any.
Do you foresee this progressing in any type of manner? I was doing some research and I... I was doing some research and I looked at, uh, residential TIFs, where these lock-in, um, the idea of, of, of free refurbishing, renovating, or re-reducing infrastructures in residential areas. It's a housing TIF, basically, is what it boils down to. Uh, so it encourages, obviously, to develop new housing and also the infrastructure in that area, if I read that correctly. I think I did. So, maybe step two at this point, since we're making these, uh, motions, we go to residential TIF. Or, or, you know, other word is housing TIF, I think is the other way to use. Why are you looking like that?
It's actually in the statute, it's residential TIF.
Okay.
It's, it's telling you you're right.
You're right.
No, I'm saying why are you looking like that? You was thinking, that's what was going on, who was the turn? Yeah. I was just saying, I think that the next step should be that. Could be.
Yeah, this is step one, and, um, I think it can go anywhere beyond that. In the past, I asked about that, you know, more concentration in neighborhoods. I think where, um, you get the benefit of either industrial, commercial properties within those, they, they contribute to a larger amount of the tax base, where sometimes, uh, the tax base from a residential area would be a longer climb up the ladder to have a significant impact. But, to me, this says everything is on the table going forward, and we should have those discussions. Uh, why there was a substitute tonight is because we added, um, just, uh, a small line about encouraging the city to look where it is feasible and correct to encourage minority contractors and, and their participation in, um, the production of any, um, anything within these neighborhoods. So, uh, that was added, and thank you, uh, Councilman Davis, for making that suggestion, uh, two weeks ago.
You're welcome.
With that, I think, um...
Comment, no question.
We'll come back for comments before we go to the final vote.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Sina, thank you all. Uh, we hope you get your support. We'll turn it open, open to the public. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on, uh, this resolution, two zero one, zero one, uh, please come to the podium. Sina, anyone wishing to speak against two zero zero one, please come to the podium. Sina, we'll turn it back to council. Comments? We'll start with Mr. Warner.
Thank you, President. So, um, this, this issue is one of the reasons why I applied for the redevelopment commission and was, and was thankful to be appointed, was to, uh, continue to push some of those funds toward, uh, economic development in our neighborhoods, in our streets, in our sidewalks, that will also increase value in neighborhoods. Howard Park has been, you know, the golden example of that, the, uh, you know, the economic, you know, we've got thirty thousand visitors and the money that has come into that neighborhood from people eating out. And, uh, um, I, I think our percentages, although it's a good starting place, may be low. I did have, with the residential TIF, I got a concern about the residential TIF, is anytime you take TIF, you're taking money out of the general fund, right?
No. No.
No. Those are dollars that would go to the general fund, but they go into the TIF fund.
Yeah, but they're not being taken out. TIFs are basically redirected, I guess. Well, it's based upon new development. It's not existing enough development. So, you're not taking it out. You're just reserving it for other purposes.
If it's not going to the TIF, then it would, would have gone to the general fund, right? So, it's limiting your ability to use.
Yeah, I mean, you can say it that way, but it's not being taken out, because it doesn't exist.
Mr. Warner, continue your comment.
So, I agree with this. I support it full-heartedly, and, uh, um, in my role on the redevelopment commission, will continue to, uh, push for this.
That's why I voted for you. Anything to my right? Any comments from anybody on the right side?
Yeah, I just want to say...
That's physically, not politically.
Um, I just, I, I just want to say and remind everybody that the language in the TIF does, just in general for TIF districts, does support, um, the purposes of the public good. So, that does include, um, infrastructure, curbs, sidewalks, the kinds of things we want to see and increase the quality of life and quality of place in our neighborhoods. So, in many ways, what this resolution does is, is, um, in effect, in fact, underline that for us. And, uh, so I, I just, I just want to share that, that the spirit of the resolution is, um, is important. It's a, it's an underline of the kinds of infrastructure improvements that we want to see, TIF money being used for in neighborhoods.
Thank you. Anyone else on...
What I, I would like to say that...
Yes.
Thank you. I hear a lot about the neighborhood organizations and how a lot of funding and projects, uh, and ideas come through them. And there's some neighborhoods that don't have that voice. And so what I would be kind of glad to see is if this would, would be directed in that manner to go to parts of the city that don't have a neighborhood association but still need help in those neighborhoods. I can think of quite a few corridors right now in my district, uh, where I think this would be very beneficial. So, I'm very supportive of this resolution and hope that, um, the administration will work with us to address those neighborhoods.
Thank you. Anyone else on the physical left but could be on the political right?
That would be him.
Okay. None other? Thank you. Uh, I'd just like to comment, I appreciate, uh, Ms. White and Ms. McBride on this, and, uh, Ms. Marsha Jones, um, the president of, um, redevelopment, who was wholeheartedly supportive of this and also, uh, the administration. So, thank you all. With that, um, any motion?
Motion for pass?
Substitute.
For the substitute version.
Ms. Jones, roll call.
Councilmember Teshka?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskowski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Vice President White?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President Scott?
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. Ms. Jones, would you please give first reading to zero six two zero?
Zero six two zero, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the zoning ordinance for property located at five fourteen Francis Street, Councilmanic District Number Four in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I'll entertain a motion to send this APC for three sixteen and, uh, common council Z and A for two twenty-three.
Second. Two twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Jones, zero seven two zero.
Zero seven two zero, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year twenty twenty.
We'll let this be sent to our personal and finance committee, uh, and set for second reading of public hearing for our meeting on, uh, March ninth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Jones, would you please read zero eight two zero?
Zero eight two zero, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year twenty twenty, of six hundred and eighty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-four from general fund number one oh one, thirty thousand from police state seizures fund, number two sixteen, one hundred thousand from gift donation and bequest fund, number two seventeen, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars from liability insurance premium reserve fund, number two twenty-six, ten thousand two hundred and eighty-two from local road and street fund, number two fifty-one, five hundred thousand from motor vehicle highway restricted fund, number two sixty-six, forty-nine thousand eighty-seven dollars from take-home vehicle police fund, number two seventy-eight, two hundred and ten thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars from IT indication, three-one-one call center fund, number two seventy-nine, one hundred fifty-six thousand five hundred and ninety-six from COPS Moore Grant Fund, two, number two ninety-five, fifty thousand from County Option Income Tax Fund, number four oh four, three hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars from Morris, Morris Capital Improvement Fund, number four one six, and nine hundred and eighty thousand from Century Center Capital Fund, number six seventy-one.
I move that this, uh, also be sent to our personal and finance committee and set for second reading of public hearing on March ninth.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Jones, please read zero nine two zero.
Zero nine two zero, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number one oh six eight five dash nineteen, which fix maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend for calendar year twenty twenty to increase salary for, for one new position.
Move that this be sent to personal and finance committee for, uh, our meeting on March ninth and set for second reading of public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Is there any unfinished business? Sina, any new business, Ms. Vice President Karen White?
On Monday, we'll have our first, um, budget educational series, uh, will be on Monday, March the second, from five till seven P.M. Uh, the, Mr. Dan Parker, our city controller, will be coming to discuss the twenty twenty budget, but also to give, uh, update on the actions and also the results of the neighborhood, um, meetings that we held in two thousand and nineteen. And, uh, I think he has one more item that we will be sharing with the council at that time is open. Uh, we do plan to have three educational series leading up to, uh, two thousand and twenty-one budget hearings that will be forthcoming.
Thank you. Anything else on our new business?
Mr. Warner? Uh, tomorrow, we've got our full council, uh, meeting with the, uh, school board, the first ever in history. I would like to give a huge shout-out and a thank you to Clerk, uh, Jones and her team for helping put this together. Uh, they moved mountains and did incredible work. Thank you very much for your help.
Good job.
I appreciate it. Uh, the, uh, you know, the mayor will speak, the superintendent will speak. I know the, the, kind of the word on the street is this is, uh, a sales meeting for the referendum. I think for everybody up here, that's, uh, not the case. And, and whatever happens with the referendum, whether it succeeds or fails, come, uh, May, uh, this continues dialogue as, uh, Councilmember Davis is necessary, it's vital, to our city, to our schools, to our kids, to our teachers. So, uh, I encourage everybody to come tomorrow night to meet in their school at six o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. One thing that I do have is I'm going to ask this council that we pick a Wednesday night and we play basketball with the River City Rollers.
That's hard.
Let me have, we gotta get a wheelchair, right?
Yes, this is wheelchair basketball.
Hey, look.
That's hard.
Hey, I probably need a wheelchair out there.
They have asked me, uh, to try to set this up, uh, back before the holiday, and it was just too daunting of a chance, task to try to get everybody. But I'll be reaching out to you all. What we would like to do is, is go play basketball, whether you're good or not. Henry Davis?
No.
It is something to experience. I've done it before. The other thing is, uh, we need to see from the eyes of others within our communities, those with, um, challenges that we don't have. And, um, they actually expressed if anybody wants to take the challenge of working your day, your full day from a wheelchair. And I think that would be a good experience. But step one, I'll, uh, be reaching out to this council. We'll try to set up a time where we would go and play. Uh, the mayor and I did this a while back. My arms came back bruised, all on the inside from the wheels. But it is absolutely amazing, uh, to watch this team play, and, uh, it, it's really a good time. So, uh, uh, I'll be following up with that probably tomorrow. Anything else under new business? Sina, we will turn to privilege on the floor. This is where you can come to the council. Uh, we will not engage you. Uh, we will take your information, uh, and turn it over to the appropriate committee or administration. You have three minutes to address anything on, uh, in front of the council that was not on the agenda tonight. So, you cannot talk about any of the screw-ups that I made on motions. And anything that we have, we will turn over and then follow up with you. Please state your name and address and go, Mr. Brown.
I'm Neil Brown. Two two three, South Bend. I live in the first district. And, uh, I'm here to speak about fourteen holes eight built. I've been, uh, ice-rated our community for quite a while. A lot of people are calling about this particular property. But I've learned one thing about this, uh, about this. It might take a while. Memorial Hospital of Beacon, whatever you want to call it, it's six years. We get the profit straight out of there. But, uh, thanks to Mr. Scott, Mr. Ed Morbach, we got pizza in that neighborhood. Fourteen oh eight, I get a lot of calls. They say they didn't give up, they don't care about us. I said, you gotta believe in your people in the process. That's what we get done. The people gonna find some relief. That's what we get cleaned up. We own a secondary, second code enforcement office. No, we down to three. We went to, uh, two of them, didn't get done, but I believe in the process. So, I'm going to keep fighting. I hope Mr. Scott don't go away, because we in it. And we're going to get that fourteen oh eight cleaned up. We also, uh, they have a new substation from the south to the north, and everybody wanting to come visit, can get that property cleaned up. I think it's going to be done. So, I'm going to keep coming, keep praying, and keep talking about it. My drug house too, eight years. But through some good people, some good administrators, my drug house is gone.
What's fourteen oh eight? Jurors. Jurors.
Thank you. Uh, I forgot to add, uh, Mr. Teshka is keeping time, uh, for everybody. He will give you a thirty-second, uh, exit warning.
Jason, thank you, Chris Love, thirty-eight, twenty-two, Ford Street. A couple of months ago, I was reading the white paper about kind of the hidden feet of infrastructure that cities have. You know, extra-wide streets, things like that. Got me thinking, you know, we have twenty-two-hundred-ish lanes, miles of road in South Bend, only about eleven-hundred-ish that we drive on. So, we already have double the lane miles of road for, you know, free parking, off-the-road parking. Now, I was driving the other day down Lincoln Way, and I'm, you know, we switched that from four lanes to three, but now really the third lane is just a turn lane in the middle of a residential area, uh, which is kind of a waste. It's, you know, not necessarily a needed project. It got me thinking, how many other wasted lane miles of road do we have in this town? How much space, you know, when we can afford to repave our roads about once every eighty-seven years, how many of these hidden lane miles do we have? You know, if you drive down Ford Street by the bar, you could fit five cars wide down there. Is that necessary? No. So, my challenge to each and every one of you is as you drive around your neighborhoods and around your districts, find these hidden feet, find these areas, and then take them back to Mr. Morbach and say, hey, when we repave this next time, can we make it narrower? When, you know, like we're getting with Jefferson Boulevard and the residential areas there. When we repave that, can we make it two lanes and just put a tree-lined median down the middle of the road and kill the turn lanes in the middle of a residential neighborhood? And kill these extra lane miles. That way, going forward, we can hopefully next generation have the money to fund and actually repave our roads more than once every eighty-seven years.
Thank you. Next, name and address, sir.
Eight thirty-seven, South Twenty-Four Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one five. I attended the conference. University has known the day of Crox Center Peace Studies, representing the Native American Symposium. It was an all-day conference. I was our representative from South Bend, and I can say it's a frank effect of what has happened to me, and there's nothing... has happened to me and there's nothing that is just by chance, you happen to experience something like this. It 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 just happens because you're aware, you make yourself available, and when I went to the meeting, I couldn't believe what social justice meant, they just had a referendum at Notre Dame. They are now recognizing the Native American Nation who provided the University of Notre Dame the land to build as a community for the Native Americans who lived in Madlin-Burton. And you say Madlin-Burton has a gorgeous Princess Madlin there. South Bend has also the beautiful St. Patrick's Park, there is no recognition of anything there. And it's amazing to think that what the push been for Potawatomi Park is all from superintendents of Michigan because they're encouraging the Native American, understanding nothing, but nothing is ever happening here in our South Bend community. And that is something that it brought out from the referendum that now Notre Dame is recognizing what the cultural center was set up for as an educational center for our Native American population who built the school first with the mission from Father Soren coming from France and everything else, it was for the Native American. The big trading post was right there in Madlin-Burton, that St. Patrick's Park, that's why all the land was Native American. The next thing was that I went to Father Jenkins, can I have this letter? I was supposed to give it to Graham to pass along, I know I brought that to your attention to everyone, but just to say it is from Notre Dame. And he said, Mr. Goodchild, you made a very important point. We are part of the Native American from the referendum, we're looking at reaching out as Mohler's comment from good neighborhoods, we're reaching out to our neighborhoods, reaching out to see how we can develop. And it's very important, the head of the program, who is Perry's brother, Aaron Perry, raised the Native American, the same one that I raised, Aaron Perry, and said, can we get this at Potawatomi? He said, can we get this at Notre Dame? I went to Jenkins and I got that letter, and then I get the...
Mr. Goodchild, your time is up.
I thought you said thirty seconds.
I said thirty seconds.
Oh, thirty seconds, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go, go, go.
All right, you put those sentences back, as we should say. The the point being, now I'm trying to remember, I tried to think, was that with that connection between Perry here and Perry, the head of the Department of Cultural Services with the Native American people at Notre Dame, was he brought the flag up and presented to all of us, that's what we're hoping to get approved, so that in keeping with Mayor Lewis, community development and to reach out to others, and we could reach out by sending a letter from this group saying that we'd love to see the outcome of that flag there at Notre Dame.
Thank you, Mr. Goodchild. Thank you, next name and address.
My name is Marla Bodet, I live at one one nine five nine Adams Road. I was here a couple weeks ago and I heard some gentleman speak about wanting to cite Broadway Church for their involvement with feeding the homeless and different things that was going on at the church that they deemed to be a nuisance. It really bothered me because just on January nineteenth, Carl Heltsler, the pastor of both Broadway and Eppworth Church, was honored at a community event, and it says that it's because he was supported as being a person that seeks peace, that opens doors for the homeless and feeds the hungry while continuously battling injustices and bringing all of God's people together. I need to know what we as a community can do to help you as council when it comes to the issue of homelessness, mental illness, and not having detox centers in our area. Right now, we're saying people in the community to close a church or cite a church or however it was written, that's what they're supposed to do. And when we get to the point where we're saying that we don't allow a church to do the work that it's supposed to do, and then we're not helping to do it further, I wanna come directly to the council and say somehow we've gotta do something. And I believe as people, we can help support you all with whatever funding you have for those issues, maybe we can come together and do something. I don't know what's been presented recently, all I know is I was heartbroken when I left here, and I've been heartbroken for the last two weeks to hear that people would rather a church close than to help the people in the community that it serves. On this weekend, I had the opportunity to work face-to-face with the House Majority Whip Congressman Claiborne, and the thing he said to all of us young aspiring people in the room is treat people well. No matter what you do, no matter how you serve, you must care for the people in your community. Coming from the most powerful African-American in Congress at this time, to me, that was a mandate, that is what we have to do. So I don't even let me stop being, my people are here though, and I wanna know, I wanna put that out there, we gotta do something, we can't be walking around saying that we're gonna close churches because they're feeding the hungry and caring for the poor.
Thank you. Next name and address, sir.
My name is Jordan Giger, six oh two South Edison Street, and I just kinda wanted to follow up, I was at, I think it was a residential neighborhoods committee meeting where Dan Parker was reporting out about kind of what the city is doing in terms of equitable spending, and I raised a question at the time, and I think Councilwoman White, I concluded you emailed us today, or sorry, today, and it was about the home repair program?
Yes.
So we've talked about how over the course of the last few years, we put more money, more dollars towards home repair, but when I asked him specifically about how much of that money was spent, right, like not just allocated, but actually spent, and where it was spent at, he didn't, he didn't get back to me, he didn't really know. He talked about the new bills, but not about that home repair dollars, right? And I think it's important that the council really start asking these questions and really looking more closely at data, because we need to make sure that yes, that that money's spent in these neighborhoods, but also that it's reaching the people we're trying to reach. I'm glad to hear that Councilman Davis asked that there was a line in two of the resolution about not just making sure that money from TIF was spent in neighborhoods that need it, but also that it was reaching minority groups' folks who we know need it. In our last, part of Black Lives Matter, obviously, but in our last meeting on Sunday, we talked a little bit about, or a lot about, our priorities, and one of our main priorities is making sure that black businesses are receiving business from the city, they're getting money from the city, right? We had a scholar, I guess you can say, his name is Ricky Clea, University of Notre Dame, and we looked at, he went through the data, and we found that in two thousand and seventeen, this is data that's available to you all, right, that in two thousand and seventeen, a hundred and one million dollars of public money was spent out, right, on like various businesses for various projects, but only seven hundred and seven dollars went to a black firm. So we need to be asking those kinds of questions, I believe, like at every meeting. When they come in, they report all this stuff, okay, how much are we spending, what might go to businesses? I think we need to use that lens and that eye, and that was even put forward in the prosperity now report, it had a set of ten minutes of questions, right, that you should be asking as you're allocating money or passing policy. I wanna hear that's part of the discussion, right, like that was a long time ago, shouldn't take for Henry to come back to the council for that to be raised in discussion, so that's all.
Next name and address.
Andrew Duncan, twenty-one oh three High Street. One, I wanted to come and say thank you to Councilwoman White in McBride. I was on the receiving end, one, I came here a couple years ago and complained about golf balls hitting the sides of our houses and destroying people's windows and their cars in the high street block next to the Super Baker Golf Course. And I think it's important for me to be here tonight, one, because I'm running for the six district, district, state house.
Will politics.
Sorry, I can't talk golf. But you have to hear that people are thankful when you do the work that they ask you to do. And so not only did, as a person who had one of the worst parts of the fence in my backyard, that got completely replaced and actually gained square footage to my backyard, so it added property value to me, so I'm very happy that the city did that. But they also, in addition, went back to, all the way to the entrance of the golf course and raised the netting. So that was another thing that the neighborhood and myself had asked for. So we are very grateful for that, I've spoken to a lot of the neighbors there, and we're eternally grateful for the work that got done by you and others who got that accomplished. Secondly, sorry, I know I'm running out of my time, there are vacant houses on our on our street, and this is causing a separate problem. One, because there's starting to be instances where people are getting into the homes and either destroying them or getting drugs in them, and then when you're walking past the homes, we're getting a lot of vermin and things, so actually specifically next to my house, there's a house that has been empty for four years, as long as I've lived on the block, and we've contacted the bank, we pulled NCOD records, and we've tried to make offers on the house to buy it and knock it down, just because it would be easier than continuing to do what we're doing now, which is we're removing the snow ourselves at our own cost, we're cutting the grass ourselves at our own cost, and that's actually the second property. There are two directly next to my house that are direct to, next to my neighbor's houses, who have children and things. Specifically, one of these properties has about an eight-foot hole in the foundation of the home, that you could throw a washer down the front of the property, and it just hasn't been addressed. I'm thirty seconds. Sorry, so we've, you know, contacted code enforcement, and I just wanna know, like, what's the timeliness on that? And like, we live in a neighborhood with very active neighbor sharing, you're there all, you know, all the time in the meetings, and we just like, we know that we can get these things accomplished, but how do we? Cause the bank clearly doesn't wanna take care of the property and it's becoming a nuisance and bringing the property value down, and if you've been up and down High Street, people have redone their decks, redone their siding, things like that, so they're invested in their neighborhood, so we just need something from the city that will say that you're ready as well.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you.
Next name and address.
Dennis Plump, three oh two South Chicago Street, president of South Park Neighborhood Alliance. I was going to get up there and talk about something else, but you had already talked about the TIF program and money that was going in, but I have another issue that I'm bringing forth, and that's about the Charles Black Center. In the renovation of that center, the quality of work that went into our center is subpar. You know, you can look at, I'm a gentleman that worked thirty-plus years in concrete construction, and 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 the work that's, like I said, is subpar, is cracking in areas that it's not supposed to be cracking. If anybody know anything about concrete, you put control joints in concrete to control the breakage of it, where we're getting cracks and stuff in it to where it's not even supposed to crack at. And with the weather that is on us right now, it'll cause concrete to move up and separate. So when all of this, this snow gets off and the frost and stuff get up, it's gonna carve, heave it up and have trip points, trip points on it. So I'm coming up here to see that someone needs to get out there and take a look at this here and go back on the people who have done this work and come back and do our center as good as they put the money in to do the ice rink and all the other places. You you look at the renovation of one part of a building, up to our old park, that's separated now, but we have to look at that and be satisfied with it, and here somebody said, we put this much money into this here to help you out, to beautify your side, we want more and just as much as beautification to the places that our children go to as anybody else's go to. So we need to have some of you council members to be able to come out, take time to come out of your busy schedule and come and see about our concerns out there, so you can see what we are going through and what needs to be done.
Thank you, sir.
That's right.
Next name and address, step up. Thank you.
Good evening, Igor Rodriguez, thirteen forty East Stubeau.
Mr. Rodriguez, just a little bit louder, please. Yep, that's it.
I just wanted to bring up a couple of issues. Particularly, I wanted to make the council aware of a recent article in the HuffPost that talks about the previous administration hiring Lexible to write police manuals, and this is a, was sort of an expose in that this company basically serves to protect police departments from accountability, and the contract was for ninety-four thousand dollars, and all this information I was able to verify myself this afternoon. The alongside of this, talking about the previous administration, we have a police matrix that's come out by a police department that is under complete scrutiny and controversy and is really has a lot of corruption and all kinds of questionable behaviors and patterns that concern us all. And also a police department database that is sort of serving public relations function to try to make the city seem like it's actually informing its citizens with data. For other, for us that follow data or interested in information, we know that this previous administration had a pattern of not providing data. We know that the police database is not providing any raw data, it's heavily filtered. So I just wanted to point these issues out to the council, now that we have an administration, for you to be able to begin to have conversations to address this problem and to encourage you to take leadership and address this issue, because right now we have the police department putting forward databases and metrics when they really don't seem like they should be leading this discussion, and I'm referring to the fact that they're over and over corrupt and they continue to destroy families and people's lives in South Bend. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next name and address.
Hello, I'm Marvin Creighton, from three oh five South Lex Street, and I'm vice president of the South Park Neighborhood Association. And I'm proud to hear that the council and the school board are meeting for the first time. This could be the start of something good, and what I'm concerned about, we used to have trades in the high schools, but we don't anymore. Why is it cut out? I don't know, but it's beyond me. If we had these trades in the high schools, these guys that's dropouts and they're not Edison schools, they're doing something to do, everybody can't go to college, everybody don't wanna go to college. But it's it's a mean that they can make a lot of money in the construction industry, murder and parasite. So you've got something about, something about if you have trades in school, well, they make it a trade school, and they take out the math and the science and all that, but why is that? This is an industry where these guys can make a lot of money. You know, we saw it now at probably twenty-three dollars an hour and up, going up into thirty dollars, forty dollars an hour. This is more than just teachers make, it's more than the fire department make, it's more than the police make, why are we doing this? And if those guys go through that, the trades will take them in. Right now, they need a lot of help, they will take them, take them in, you know, put them in apprenticeship school, you know, there's something about the trades can't get involved in a high school, but that's not getting them involved in a high school, that's apple. And there are probably eighteen construction trades in the industry, so this is something that should be looked into. You talk about schools closing and all this, let's get involved, let's make it happen. Why are they, why are they, why are they favorable? There's a reason why, you know?
Give thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D. Thank you, Mr. Creighton. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn?
It's a good.
All in favor?
And have.
Good night, everybody.
Ms. Cadet. Ms. Cadet. Marla. Ms. Cadet.
Because I think those are good questions to see, so. Getting them, getting them aboard. Yeah, but that was all, I think people-
Hey, Marla.
That didn't come from us.
So, I'm going to Broadway Christian Parish on Monday at eight AM. And then to have a discussion about what they do and how we can support them. And then I'm going to the upper room after that.
They have a meeting, the neighborhood board has a meeting.
We had a meeting.